We're good.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. As y'all could tell, I'm not Wesley Corbett, our chairman. I'm Jamie Deloach, vice chairman. My chairman has something to do this evening, so he will not be with us, so I will run the meeting. Let's see. I've always wanted to do that. I will call the meeting order at 5:01. I'll do roll call. Commissioner Floyd, District 1.
Here.
Mr. Burdette, District 2.
Here.
Wesley Corbett, not present. District 3, Jamie Deloach, here. District 4, Commissioner Loper.
Here.
District 5, Commissioner Kiefer.
Here.
Okay. With that being done, please rise for the invocation.
Dear Lord, please be with us this evening and help us to do your will. Thank you for our many blessings, Lord, that you give us. And please help us to remember that all good things happen through you, Lord. Please be with the Hurricane Ian victims, Lord. Please watch over them while they are rebuilding their communities. And in your name we pray, Lord, amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, on a nation of liberty and justice for all. We move to our next item, our agenda approval. Do we have any changes that we need to make or note?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, we do have a couple of changes. Under new, I'm sorry, unfinished business items number one and two, the planning board recommends denying an application by Three Birds Development LLC to rezone 39.46 acres from AR1 to R3. The applicant has requested to withdraw those items.
So business one and two?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And those are your?
That, that's, that's it on the changes?
Okay. It's good news for me. I built a subdivision next to Greenbridge Farmers, a large lot subdivision. I reached out to Mr. Byrd to see if he might be interested in working with me, maybe even consider calling it Greenbridge Phase 2. But as of yet, I haven't heard anything. This is the second meeting I've showed up to where they didn't show up. My time is important, too. As a matter of fact, I'm helping some people from, they were stranded by Ian, find a house here. Honey Ridge Road, they're gonna pay a lot of money, so.
Yeah.
This stuff, I was in contact with the zoning board and my commissioner this afternoon to make sure that Three Birds would show up today, and I was assured that they would. Is this the last time?
Yes.
This item's been?
This is an actual withdrawal. It's not a table. So his only option right now was to be to go through the entire process over again, planning board and everything like that, should he choose to, to do this. Then in that case, it would be subject to any changes if we were to do any changes under the, under the current moratorium that we're under.
Well, it's my understanding that you didn't have the infrastructure for the, for the development anyway, that the sewage wasn't?
Sir, I, I've just gotta interject. I mean, th- this part is not, not on our agenda, but?
I just wanna make sure that we're, we're over this right now for?
Yes, we, we are. It's withdrawn and, and it's over.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, if there are no other questions or additions or changes to our agenda, I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Make a motion to approve the agenda with the taking out old business one and two.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion by Commissioner Loper, second by Commissioner Kiefer. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have an agenda. Moving on to the next item, which is our minutes. Consideration to approve the October 3, 2022 special work session minutes and the October 4, 2022 regular meeting minutes. Do I have any questions or comments on those?
I was not here for the special work session on that day.
Okay, we'll let the minute show that Commissioner Burdette was not here, special work session. Hearing no other questions or comments, I will entertain a motion to approve these minutes. Would you like one motion or separate?
Actually, it's your call, Commissioner Burdette, but that was not an action meeting.
That was not?
So it's, it's just summary of a discussion, so you're able to vote if you want.
Okay, I'll vote the?
Okay, alright, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as read.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Burdette, a second by Commissioner Kiefer. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Alright, minutes are approved. Public comments shall pertain to the agenda items only. Should you wish to make remarks, clearly state your full name until the microphone before commencing to speak. Documents from this meeting are located in the clerk's office and on the Board of Commissioners' website. Our next section, excuse me, section of the agenda is our consent agenda. This section shall include all routine items for which there will be no discussion. Should a need arise for debate, the item can be removed to the appropriate area of the agenda. Item number one on the consent agenda, consideration to approve the holiday calendar for the 2023 year. Item number two, consideration to ratify and affirm approval of a quote submitted by Sirius American Insurance Company for catastrophic inmate medical insurance for the Effingham County Jail. Item number three, consideration to approve an assemblage permit for Halloween trick-or-treating at Royal Oak Subdivision on Monday, October 31, beginning at 5:30 PM. Item number four, consideration to approve acceptance of a grant award from the Georgia Governor's Office of Highway Safety State and Community Highway Safety Grant Program, grant number 102023402PT001. Item number five of the consent agenda, consideration to approve acceptance of a grant award from the Georgia Governor's Office of Highway Safety State and Community Highway Safety Program, grant number GA2023402PT032. Reading those five items on the consent agenda, do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve as read.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Loper, a second by Commissioner Floyd. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Alright, consent agenda is approved. Now moving on, since item one and two of old business has been withdrawn, we will move to item number three, which is the second reading. Consideration to approve the second reading of an application by Dennis Morris to rezone 9.21 acres from AR2 to I1 to allow for combination with adjacent industrial zone parcels located on Old River Road, map number 305, parcel number 4A in the 1st District.
Make a motion we approve the second reading as with planning board and staff recommendations.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Floyd, a second by Commissioner Burdette. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Moving on to item number four of old business, consideration to approve the second reading of an application by Fred Evans to rezone eight of 35.86 acres located on Turkey Trail from AR1 to I1 to allow for a GDOT approved borrow source for a GDOT project, map number 452A, parcel number 10 in the 2nd District.
Make a motion to approve on staff and planning board recommendations.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Burdette, a second by Commissioner Floyd. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Moving on to the next section of our agenda, which is new business. Item number one, consideration to approve resolution number 022-047, recognizing Smalls Funeral Home Incorporated for 75 years in business.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, as you've read. Staff was approached about a resolution approved by the board celebrating the 75 years of Smalls Funeral Home. This resolution reads as such, "Whereas 75 years, Smalls Funeral Home has provided Guyton, Georgia and the Coastal Empire with end-of-life services, including pre-planning, funerals, memorials, and cremation options. They are currently one of the oldest continuously operating funeral homes in the state of Georgia. And whereas Samuel Smalls, Sr., a native of Savannah, Georgia, founded Smalls Funeral Home in 1947, and it remains Effingham County's oldest African-American-owned business. And whereas Michael Garvin, former mayor of Guyton, Georgia, is the CEO and owner of Smalls Funeral Home Incorporated. And whereas, under the management of Michael Garvin, the current building was constructed in 1995 after a fire destroyed the original building. The business was able to remain open due to the assistance of local churches and businesses. And whereas, the economic impact of Smalls Funeral Home Incorporated is evidenced by the longstanding relationships with fellow funeral homes within the surrounding Effingham County. And whereas, Smalls Funeral Home Incorporated celebrates its 75th year in business, it is important to recognize Michael Garvin, his family, and the profound impact they have had after decades of serving Effingham County. Now therefore be it resolved, the Effingham County Board of Commissioners do hereby recognize Smalls Funeral Home Incorporated and commend Michael Garvin and family for their efforts to support Effingham County and the local community. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution will be made a part of the permanent records of Effingham County Board of Commissioners, and a copy of said resolution be presented to Smalls Funeral Home Incorporated." Mr. Garvin and support team is here tonight to receive this resolution. Additionally, you all receive invitations for a celebration event that is being held.
Okay. Mr. Garvin, you wanna say a few words or any, anyone with you?
I don't think anybody with me wanna say anything.
Part of the legacy.
Michael Garvin, I just wanna say I thank you all for this honor. Believe me, this struggle hasn't been an easy one, but it's been a pleasurable one. And we thank Effingham County, 'cause had it not been for the citizens of Effingham County, our 75 years would've been over a long time ago, and we thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for everything you've done.
They always say you have to make it that first five years. I think you've exceeded that a little bit.
That's right.
I made a motion to approve that resolution.
Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Make a motion to approve the resolution as read.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Loper, second by Commissioner Burdette. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And again, thank you, Mr. Michael Garvin, for everything that you do. Very impressive, 75 years. I know it's been a lot of economic ups and downs, and hey, that's a, that's a great feat. So thank you for everything y'all do in the community. Alright, moving on to item number two, consideration to approve renewal of a contract with MetLife for dental and vision insurance and the contract with Maritane CVS Caremark for medical pharmacy through 12/31/2023. Ms. Sarah.
Okay. Sarah Mousoff, Director, Human Resources and Risk Management. Basically, staff is coming tonight to recommend renewal of our dental and vision insurance with MetLife for the calendar year 2023. There is a renewal increase of 12.6%, and that is just for dental, vision, no increase. The plans remain the same. For Maritane, which is our medical, there are a few planned recommendations. You guys got all that in your packet. Essentially, it's almost like less than 1% increase. We are gonna maintain the $50 stipend for employees, keep employee contributions the same, so I'm here tonight basically if you have any questions regarding those planned recommended changes.
And if I can add, and actually those plan changes, this is one of the benefits that we have of going self-funded, is that now we can design our own plan. And there were certain, and so we had adopted the previous plan from Anthem that was provided to us when we moved over to self-funded. Now we're structuring it ourselves, and here, the net effect is I think we are reducing deductibles, aren't we?
Mm-hmm, yes.
And, but it balances out because we were really getting hit hard on our very low deductibles for emergency room. And of course, you wanna encourage folks to go to urgent care and to their doctor and not to use emergency room as, as their first choice. And so we're making that switch, so overall, the plan is actually going to be better.
Better, yes.
For the employees, and?
A big saving on prescription costs.
Well, historically, haven't we been before self-funded, haven't we been seeing like 10 to 12% increase year over year?
Yes, and with our?
I mean, and you're saying now with self-funded, it's around less than 1?
1%, yes, sir.
Wow, that's, that's great news.
Mm-hmm.
Is that just the Maritane part, or is that, or are you talking about the, the total net plan increase?
For Maritane, yes.
Okay, so Maritane is the, they're the plan administrator. And so that, the net effect of that less than 1% is really, has to do with us tweaking the plan. What we're gonna come back with, we just, we didn't get the results back until yesterday, so it was too late to get us on this meeting. We're waiting to find out our stopgap insurance, which is our largest expense other than our medical expenses. We finally got the quotes back on that. They came in much better than the previous year.
Yes.
So our overall plan increase net or is coming in at a 1.5% increase year over year. I've been doing this for 11 years or so. I've never seen it, I've only seen it once below 10%. I've never seen it, an increase that small year over year in healthcare, so it's, but that will be on the, that will be on the next meeting.
Can we make sure we put that on the front page of the Herald or something, so like, hey, we did something good?
I will say also, over the next three years, with the changes to the prescription plan, we're gonna save a little bit over $600,000. So when we were able to send out the RFP through Traveris, so we got us some savings on our prescription side, which will help benefit the employees who have to have costly monthly prescriptions.
Okay. Yeah, normally this isn't a lot of fun to talk about, but this is a lot better, more exciting numbers here, so, very good.
Yeah, we're, we're having a way better year this year, knock on wood, you know, yes.
Yeah, okay. Do you have anything else?
I don't, obviously, we recommend alternative one.
Okay. I'll entertain any questions or comments from the board at this time?
I have to say with the dental, I've used dental in the past, and it's never really paid anything. This is the first time I've ever had a dental plan.
That's good to hear, yes.
Actually kinda pays out a little bit, so that's, it's really nice. Never had one in the past, usually I wouldn't have even?
Well, and with us continuing, we're not gonna disrupt service for the employees, which is always nice, 'cause they hate having to switch, you know? Yeah.
But it is, it is a good plan. I've never seen a really good plan for dental, but this one is.
Oh, thank you, yeah.
Very good. Anybody else?
Good job.
My kids have braces.
Yes, I can imagine, yeah. And they're not getting any cheaper.
Not, not at all.
Well, if there are no other questions or concerns, I'll entertain a motion at this point.
Make a motion to approve alternative number one.
Got a motion by Commissioner Kiefer, second by Commissioner Loper to approve alternative one. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item number three of new business, consideration to approve an amendment to the Administrative Services Agreement Schedule D-2 with the Association of County Commissioners of Georgia.
Yes, thank you. Sarah Mousoff, again, Director, Human Resources and Risk Management. So essentially, ACCG reached out to us about a month ago, just kind of informing us we were one of 122 counties, they were only providing the two options. They recommend we go to this. There's a lot of background information, I believe, that was included in your packet, so you guys could see. There are several advantages, obviously, greater consistency, ease of plan-to-plan transfer, advantage to employees by offering unique and diverse investment options, which a lot of people are interested in right now because of the situation with the economy. It enhances opportunities for investment diversification. It's more sophisticated, and obviously, an expansion of the fund families. So they are recommending us to add the third option. Staff recommends alternative one.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions or concerns from the board? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Burdette, a second by Commissioner Floyd. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Moving on to item number four, consideration to approve agreement 23-RFQ-010 with Weston and Sampson Engineers for the Hazard Mitigation Plan Update. Ms. Allison.
Evening, Allison Bruton, purchasing agent. So staff did post an RFQ requesting proposals for the Hazard Mitigation Plan Update. We did have to go through this process twice. The second time, we did receive three proposals, and the pricing is on your staff report. The proposals were reviewed by our fire chief, Clint Hodges, and staff recommends alternative one.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions or concerns from the board?
Make a motion, motion to approve as read.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Loper, a second by Commissioner Burdette. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item number five, consideration to approve change order number five for Morris Construction for Fire Station Number 15.
Yes, sir, so this change order is a request for additional funds for the addition of a two-inch water line to the building to assist in filling up the fire trucks, as well as painting the exposed steel in the bay areas. There is a time extension, and there's also a lump sum increase to reflect the increased pricing from the concrete and asphalt vendors. Staff recommends alternative one.
This is five, and these things just keep going, and they just keep going up.
Yeah, I was gonna say the same thing.
When they, when they read, when we sent out a RFQ for this stuff, when they accept it, they accept it, and, and we always have a time limit on it. But these people keep going up. They didn't have a place, they didn't have a way to fill the trucks up with water. I mean, we've been building a bunch of fire departments, I mean, have we been leaving all this other stuff off of them?
This one, I don't believe was included in this one. The design was done back in 2020, I believe, so it may have been overlooked.
And I'll tell you, the, the larger component on this change is something that we had to request because of the issue with the previous contractor defaulting. All of the, all of the steel for the building got delivered and sat there.
Yeah, I remember that, you had to go and pay for it, I understand that.
Well, but we had to paint, the, the problem is, we had to paint it. We had to put rust-inhibiting paint on it, 'cause it had, all had sat in the weather for, for three or four months. And so that really, I think, was the large, that was the largest expense on this, correct?
The asphalt's the largest, yeah.
Oh, the asphalt, the additional asphalt, I forgot about that, yeah.
I meant?
Yeah. That was?
Same thing, we send out something and some RFQ for something or whatever, and they accepted, I mean, and they already stated whatever that they accepted to do, I mean?
Do we anticipate anything else possibly?
Not on this one, and in all honesty, not even on the Guyton one, which is identical to this, because the Guyton one, when we awarded it, we figured everything that we missed in the, in the Hodgsville one is already part of the Guyton contract.
But we won't have any amendments on this?
Not, not at this moment. Clint, we don't know of any, do you? Okay.
In the Hodgsville station, that, that's a 24-hour unit or station? Okay, I thought so.
Yeah, thi- this one has been a nightmare.
Yeah.
To say the least.
How far are they running this two-inch line? I just kinda probably see it, they gotta have water already to the building, I would think. Just throwing that out there, that just seems, I'm not in construction.
Clint, you know the details on this, can you?
That portion's only like $1,600.
Okay, I'm just looking at the?
But it does seem like it keeps coming.
It does, I know it does.
And I know we had, we had problems with the original vendor on that, that's part of it, but this?
Oh, painting the exposed, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't read the entire piece right there, I got you.
I mean, I understa- I guess if the two-inch water line wasn't in the original design, and we need it.
Yeah, we need it, but, you know, it seems like we get all this before we ever send it out. When they bid on it, they bid on the whole job, all the water, concrete, and everything else.
And, and what?
Fifth time.
Well, the water line, we cannot approve it, and our fire department's not gonna have the two-inch water they need, so what do we do?
I wouldn't say to disapprove, I just?
No, I'm on proof.
I mean, I, I know what you're saying, I agree.
We?
But they just keep adding, not adding on.
That asphalt one is a killer.
Well, that asphalt one, I mean, we had a price escalation on materials on that, so that essentially is in the contract that as, as the price increases, well, you know, we have to, we have to match it between the time of the contract and when it's delivered. The, the second largest thing in there is, is really the paint, which has, really has to do with us, again, being punished because of the previous contractor leaving that stuff out there. So we just, and we just put the primer on it, we didn't put, you know, two coats of paint on it, just whatever we had to do to, to stop the rust spreading.
What was it, $5,000 just to paint it, they'd have called me, I'd have painted it real soon, but anyway.
I can see that.
And then the two-inch water line was something, it's, it's not the large portion of, of this, but that was something that we missed in design, that we caught, that we had to request change on, that we caught in, prior to doing the Guyton. So there, there is some fault certainly on our side on this, that?
Need it, yeah, we want everything to?
Because change orders?
We need to get it for.
Yeah, it's, it ain't, change orders are a lot more expensive, so, believe me, I know.
Alright, are there any other questions or concerns? I think, I know staff is aware of, this one's been an issue, and I'm sure y'all will keep an eye on this. Are there any other questions or issues, concerns? Okay. Hearing none other, I will open it up and entertain a motion.
I will make a motion to approve order number one.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Loper, second by Commissioner Floyd. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item number six, consideration to approve change order number three for agreement 22-25-010 with McLendon Enterprises Incorporated for the LMIG 2022 and other roadwork.
Yes, sir, so staff did request a quote from McLendon to pave the parking area at the Clio Killdeer Fire Station, which is, involves the removal of some fly ash material. So their submittal is $77,360.98, and staff is recommending alternative one.
Okay. Any questions or concerns from the board?
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
Got a motion? Got a motion by Commissioner Burdette, a second by Commissioner Floyd. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. That concludes the new business portion of our meeting. We will move on to reports from commissioners and administrative staff. I'll start with Tim, our county manager. If you have anything you'd like to share?
Yeah, I'll just say, we do, just to give you a heads up, the, the meeting with City of Savannah on that whole multitude of issues will occur on Thursday morning. And we also, we've been keeping up essentially with, with the capital projects. We are still having trouble getting applicants for some of our higher-end positions, particularly in development services. But we're looking to expand our, our net of where we advertise on that to see if we, if we can pick up folks from, from out of the region. But, but that's all the report that I have.
Okay. Moving on to our county clerk, Ms. Stephanie, do you have anything you would like to share with us?
Just, you actually have it with you. It's your monthly report from EOM. And just a reminder about the Hyundai celebration next week. You were to RSVP for that if you were attending. If you haven't, you may have an opportunity to do so if you still like to attend. That Hyundai celebration at the End Market Arena.
Okay, I got you.
That was next Tuesday?
That's next Tuesday, yeah. That's all I have.
All right. Any other staff members? Do y'all have anything? Ms. Teresa, or Mark? Clint? No? Okay. I will move on to the board. Commissioner Floyd, do you have anything?
I don't. I sent Tim some information about some, I actually worked over in District Two. Did you get that text? Where they did some paving over there in front of South F H M Elementary, where they did the work, they dug up a bunch of roots and everything, and the folks along there want where they can cut the grass again. So, I guess, EOM's got to go there and clean up whoever did that paving
Okay.
over there. But I sent you a text with the pictures that he sent me.
Okay. Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll take a look at it. I thought we, I mean, that contract's still open.
Okay. It may not be finished. I don't know.
Yeah. So, we can get them to go back there if they haven't done the grading yet.
They just want it smoothed back out so they can cut the grass and maintain that frontage.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Burdette?
I got a few things that actually came out of the forum the other night. Just want to put on our radar if we can. And one will be the library. Start taking a strong look at that. I know some of you guys were there and already know about that, but I think we should maybe look at that and see what, what else we could do with that. I'm not sure when the last time we've had updates, or what the forward progress could be on something like that, but it is something that I believe is still of big value to the community. Secondly, taking a stronger look at commercial with IDA. I met with my representative. I know we all have one. But, you know, just kind of seeing what that looks like. Can we ask them to create a new part of that where they focus more on commercial instead of just industrial? Where we can look at restaurants and commercial-type thing?
Legislatively, I don't know what they're
I don't know if they're, they're channeled into that, or how that works. But it would definitely be the arm to do it with would be some kind of, you know, commercial, or do we need to create something new? But we, just think, we need some focus in those areas. You know, we're focusing on industry, and that's great, and that, and that sector, but we need to be, some equal focus in these other sectors. I'd love to have a place. I know everybody else would, to eat here instead of going to Poole, or have some more things to do with our families. And I think we do, we've got, in order to do that, we've got to start putting focus on those areas. Want to throw out Earl Lane. I'm not sure where we're still at with Earl Lane. I still get some complaints. I think you got some friends over there. But, and, and it's valid. There are more and more people are using that as a cut-through.
Sure.
That's a dirt road. The legalities of that in the middle, I know we're not going, if we're going to pay it, we're going to pay the whole thing. Does it make sense to do that? But, and it may necessitate having more volume in there, but there sure is a lot of people using that as a, as a cut-through road right now.
And, and I can tell you, one of the things on Earl Road, they've been, and this, I, I hear from them periodically. I haven't heard from them in a little while, but they, they wanted the county to concentrate more on enforcement. Because I think, a couple of conversations I had with folks out there was, they're concerned about if you pave it.
More, more people will use it.
Yeah, more people will use it. So, they, they kind of want to not necessarily, they, they wanted to hold off on that, just make sure it's maintained, still maintained as a dirt road. But I, I can take a look at enforcement on it as well.
If it makes sense. I don't know if it's worth spending some money. There's not a lot of people live there, but if there is a lot of people using it anyway.
Right. Yeah, it definitely, for sure, would
More people we can move, and more traffic, we can keep moving along. The more connections we have, I think, the better. Lastly, I did have some suggestions from Mr. Enman. I'm not sure if he's here tonight, Rex Enman. As far as a minimum lot size, we may want to consider as we're looking at density and different things, or some portion of an acre instead of, you know, how much we could put on an acre. That may be a consideration to, to work on our density issues. I thought that was a good suggestion, and a couple of other things. But lastly, and I'll, I'll, I'll stop. A lot of things going on, really. Truck parking and those signs, I know we've discussed those a couple of times. I've looked more into that, and just going on to Goshen Road, when you pull on to Goshen Road, by the time you get there and the tractor trailer's actually on Goshen Road, then they see the sign, and there's nothing they can do.
And, and we are addressing that.
We are, okay, great.
And just, but you can look on Goshen Road to see what we've kind of started on that. We started on Golden Drive. So, when you pull into Golden Drive, you will now see where they have the yellow intersection sign, and it shows the road name on it. Underneath it, we're starting to put a rider that says no trucks.
No truck, great.
So, and we did that on Scuttle, Scuffletown now, and we did that on Courthouse. So, we're going to try and put those pretty much on, anytime you come off a truck route onto a county road, we're going to try and update those signs to get those on there.
That would be great. Another suggestion that I got the other day is actually from, from Mr. Jimmy that attends the meetings quite often. I thought this was good as well. You know, I know our trucking ordinances allow for them to take their trucks home, which I still agree with, but trucks and trailers, some of these trailers, and he's correct, can weigh eighty thousand pounds. You know, they can be heavy. And I don't think our roads can take that, and some of these private roads. Be fine with the, you know, parking their tractor and stuff there, the weight's just not there. But when they add their trailers there, and they park those there, and they're full, that's a massive amount of weight on, on these roads that aren't equipped for it. So, we may want to rethink that and, and take a look at doing a little something different there that still allows the guy to take it home if that's his livelihood. But let's keep the trailers in a commercial area. That's
And I, and I thought we had addressed that in the ordinance, but I'll, I'll check it.
I'm not sure. I don't think we did. If we did, that's great. We probably need to start looking at enforcing stuff.
We should have. Because our, our intent was to not have trailers at home, just to have the cabs.
I don't recall putting that in there, so we could take a look at that. That's definitely something we want to keep off small roads like Golden and some other ones, you know, that are pulling. And at the end of the day, if you pull a full container out of the port, it's, it's, it's really heavy.
Kind of a follow-up. Is there any enforcement? I mean, have you talked with the sheriff as far as these trucks cutting through? Constantly, I'm getting complaints, these log trucks cutting through. They come down Seventeen, take a right on, it's right across from Old Marlowe Road.
Yeah.
Cut through, then hit Sand Hill, go down Sand Hill to head over to the Mildrum Plant instead of going all the way down Seventeen and then taking a right on Eighty. I mean, it's constantly, I get that call. And I think the signs are there. Now, maybe the no trucks will stop them, but unless there's some type of enforcement, they're going to pass that sign just like the rest of these signs. And I don't know what, you know, I don't know how to address it. I tell these folks, that's a law enforcement issue, call the sheriff's department. But these guys are still blasting, blasting through Sand Hill Road with those log trucks. So, it's an ongoing problem. But anyway, just
Anything else?
There too.
No, sir.
Okay. All right. I'll skip myself and come back. Commissioner Loper, do you have anything?
No, I'm still waiting on the Chippin Seal Road there to get them. Tim's working on it.
Where?
That's all I have.
Commissioner Kiefer?
I, I have nothing this evening.
Okay. Just two things real quick. After the meeting, I don't know, Allison or either Mark, I need to get with y'all. Got a question from Ranger Construction on something, so I just need to make sure I put them in touch with the right person. The last, last thing, I guess, circling back with what Commissioner Loper just said, I know Tim and I have been talking. I guess with the money that we have in sploshed for roads, and I guess if we're going to access that, we will need to bond that out, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And we don't, and so, under what we agreed to with the three cities, we, they only, they requested that we only bond out our county-wide projects. And so, that's what we bonded out, the sixteen million dollars worth of county-wide projects. So, the unincorporated projects, as of right now, doesn't have referendums approval to, to bond out. And so, we've kind of got to wait for that money to come in.
Okay, so technically, yeah, so we cannot access that money early. We've got to wait till it's actually collected at, at the end of year five.
And it won't take that long.
Okay.
I mean, at the rate that work, that, that, that it's coming in, it'll, it, it, we, we should have access to some of those funds fairly quick. And plus, some of these projects are going to take much longer that, you know, we can, you know, front-load, let's say, the road projects, and then, you know, some of these other projects will, will take several years for us to, to get started.
And is there a way that we can tell, you know, hey, this is how the money's going to be split up, this, it's going to be X amount of dollars? So, we can kind of start thinking about, I guess, a list. I know it would be a smaller list for each district, but since we're not talking about as much money, but
I think it was, was it a million dollars per?
I know at one time, it was five, yeah, it was like five million total, so, yeah, million dollars. We split it like that, a million dollars per district. But, but I didn't know if some of that was going to the cities, if that all five million was ours?
No, that's all ours, because that was, that was unincorporated projects, so
Okay.
we can, we can start come, you know, coming up with, with, my suggestion would be, if we come up with a list, we then combine it with next year's El-Mig.
Get volume pricing.
So that we can just do it as one contract.
Okay, all right. Sounds good. Well, that's all I have.
Say one more thing.
Yep.
I just want to make a, a public apology. I said some things out of passion for this county. I had a workshop we had that affected a developer, the one that did one, the one beside Alum Woods. I'm, I'm not sure the name of that development. Just want to apologize. My intention was never to identify them as lying to anybody or anything like that, but it was not it at all. I was upset with the, the process of it, and still think we could use some tweaking. I spoke with them today, and, and that, that was not the intention. I, I had, couldn't be further from the truth. I may have come off like that, but I did not mean that. And I wear my heart on my sleeve a lot, and quite often, that's me. And if I've said something to insinuate that, that, that was not the intention whatsoever. But I'm passionate about helping people, you know, if it's two, or if it's two hundred, and that's what I want to do in those situations. But everything they did there was completely legal, completely above the board, completely in line with their ordinances. There was nothing wrong with that, that part of it at all. I think we do need to make some changes so we can help in those situations. But, but I just wanted to clear the record on that, because that, that was not the intention whatsoever.
Okay. I don't think there, there's no executive session minutes to approve, is it?
Oh, wait, didn't we have one?
Yeah, there was some, there is executive session.
Yeah, we have executive session minutes.
I think we have another need for one, but this is
All right, so we need to approve the October fourth.
Six.
October fourth.
October fourth, yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I make a motion to approve the executive session minutes from October four, two thousand and twenty-two.
Sir.
Okay, I got a motion by Commissioner Kiefer to approve the minutes, executive session minutes from October fourth. A second by Commissioner Loper. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, like sign. That carries, motion carries unanimously. Is there any other business that we need to conduct this evening? Hearing none, I will make a motion that we are adjourned.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.